One to the
September thirteenth, City of Twolleton Regular City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, which will be led by Councilor Pratt.
Please place your hands over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is our Moment of Silence for those who have lost their lives due to COVID-19, led by Councilor Brooks.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and also after um a very um mindful weekend celebrating or remembering the twenty year anniversary of nine eleven and the people that we lost then and um during the COVID crisis now where we are um wanting to be really careful around our hospital systems and being safe. Um, please join me in in uh remembering and being mindful of those that are still suffering and that we've lost through COVID nineteen. Thank you.
You. I just want to follow up with the comment made by Councilor Brooks about, you know, nine eleven this past weekend, and just want to remember all the folks who lost their lives in New York City and in Shanksville and at the Pentagon. Um, as many of you know, I was born and raised in Long Island, New York, and I knew three people who passed away at the World Trade Center. I just want to remember them. Uh, there were two brothers, Mark and Stephen Kaleo, who I went to elementary school with. Uh, Stephen was thirty-two, Mark was thirty-four. They uh worked at Cantor Fitzgerald and were on the hundred and fourth floor, so um they uh had the unfortunate lot, if you will, that they were right where the planes hit. And then George Howard um was a Port Authority Police Officer. He was the older brother of my childhood best friend. He was a lieutenant uh in the Port Authority Police. He's also a captain in our local fire department. He was actually off that day and decided he was going to go in, just like all the emergency responders did. They rushed in versus ran away. Uh, he was helping people guide. He was helping guide people out of the World Trade Center when debris landed on him and killed him. Of note here, why George is super special is that his mother, Arlene, uh was at the site when President Bush came to visit, and somehow his mother pushed by the Secret Service and got to President Bush and gave George, gave President Bush George's badge, which is badge number ten, twelve. And if you remember, uh, at the first day of the Union, after nine eleven, President Bush held that badge up, and he carries it with him to this day, uh, George's badge. And one of the things I give credit for President Bush is he has kept in touch with the Howard family since he's been, you know, since he left office. He's still in touch. So, as far as members, you know, those who lost their lives and the families, and families were devastated, so um, it was a terrible day, and um I hope you had a chance to watch the remon- the memory, uh, remembrance summary on that, on nine eleven. It was, well, five hours long, but it was phenomenal. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to uh announcements. So our first announcement is declaring the month of September twenty twenty-one as emergency preparedness month in the City of Twolleton, and this proclamation would be read by Councilor Pratt.
And I think we have a staff
Presentation.
We have a little staff.
All right.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Marshall here. I'm a Management Analyst to and Information and Maintenance Services, and one of the large parts of my role at the city is working on emergency management. So um, just wanted to say a couple of things. The the proclamation this month for September as National Preparedness Month that will bring the City of Twolleton um in with much of the rest of the nation and recognizing this month um as kind of a moment to think about preparation and, you know, it's not been a dull moment recently in that, in that world, and so we've got a lot of things to reflect on and then things to engage with in terms of uh preparing for a variety of types of emergencies. So taking the month of September is a great time to spend some time actively engaging and reflecting on our preparation for a variety of things. And then later on, um, in the agenda, we have a, an annual report from our Community Emergency Response Team, and we are lucky and fortunate to have a wonderful relationship with Twolleton CERT um for years now, and Kathy Holland, their fearless leader, uh, is here to tell you all about things that they've been doing, especially during the pandemic. Our program's one of the few in around locally that have still been engaging actively in um training team members, and we're having new classes and engaging in activities. So they've been fantastic, and I'm looking forward to um having everybody hear the great things um that they've been up to, and we're just really grateful to have them as a part of our community. Thank you. Off to you, Councilor Pratt.
Declaring the month of September two thousand twenty-one as emergency preparedness month in the City of Twolleton. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools, and whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning, and residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools, and work sites, or be confined to homes, and whereas the world has grabbled with the COVID nineteen pandemic, which has impacted the nation and city for extended periods of time, requiring residents to prepare differently for other disasters that may affect their community, and whereas the challenges posed posed by climate change such as more intense storms, heat waves, drought, wildfires, and extreme flooding could significantly alter the types and magnitude of the hazard faced by communities, and whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the City of Twolton, Oregon, and all residents are urged to make preparedness as a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas the city supports and encourages citizen participation in the Twolton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, so our community can be prepared, trained, and respond to emergencies. And whereas the City of Twolton participates in the Great Shakeout Grill each October to promote earthquake awareness, awareness for employees, and whereas individuals, neighborhoods, businesses, and communities can all take steps to increase their resilience and look out for one another when major emergencies or disaster strike. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by the City, Twolton City Council, that September two thousand twenty-one is emergency preparedness month and encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together for creating a more prepared community, introduced and adopted this thirteenth day of September two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Uh, now we move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in this Zoom, if there's anyone in this Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates, do you have anybody at the poll center?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Adam Klein has wished to speak.
All right, welcome, Adam.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to uh to speak. My name's Adam. Uh, I live at one seven eight zero zero Southwest one hundred eleventh by Hizzabrook Middle School. Um, and I was born and raised here, and I've recently graduated um uh college, and I'm a big uh runner in the, in the community. And the other day I was um running um around Cook Park. One of my favorite loops is down ninety-nine W, Cook Park, and then back through Twolton Park. Um, and I, and I thought, I think um it would be a great opportunity uh for the city to increase um people in both Tigard and Twolton for the use of Jergens Park and Cook Park if there was potentially some sort of pedestrian bridge built um between the river. Now, I know that a lot of the Twolton River is occupied by the country club and by neighborhoods, but between Jergens Park and the opposite side of the river is just one small trail that eventually connects to Cook Park. Um, I wasn't sure the exact avenue to bring this to the city's attention, but um I, I have photos as well if there's, if there's a need for clarification of, of what I'm um referring to, but that's uh, yeah, that's what I, what I came here to, to say.
Thank you. I'd say, yes, shoot your idea off to our city manager or to our parks folks uh with any photos you have. It's a, that idea's come up a few times to make it easier to get over to Cook Park. Um, but I'd love to see your ideas and take a look at it.
Okay, and who would I, who would I contact for that?
Do, have you wanted, uh, said to Charlene you wanted to send to you or to Ross or?
Um, probably Ross. So, Adam, I will put this in the chat, um, the contact information um to contact.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Uh, anyone else, Bates, that you're aware of?
Uh, that is all I have for tonight. No one is at the poll center.
All right, uh, open the floor for anyone else for a public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll then move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda, all those items are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of three items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and a special meeting of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Item two, consideration of approval of a liquor license application for Pizza Monk LLC DBA Bella Pizza. And finally, item number three, consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for Tara Coffee and Wine Bar slash Doja Tea Lounge. Would any city council like any of these items removed from consent tonight and heard later?
I'll move to uh prove the consent agenda as reg.
Second.
Any discussions on the motions? Right, Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
So Pratt.
Aye.
Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes. Wait, no, Council Pratt. Sorry, Dibery. Council Pratt.
Aye again.
Yep, all right, the, the whole screen shifted. I mean, Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote yes also, so it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to our special report and our special guest, the uh annual report from the Twolton Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as CERT, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam President. Um, we'll do a little technology here. Hopefully this all will work. Can you all see it? The screen?
No.
No? Lindsay, can you, it says it's failed to start. Please try again later. Lindsay, can you help us?
Yes, I will get it pulled up for you here right now.
It doesn't want to talk to my PowerPoint.
It's part of, sir, you're always prepared and have a backup plan.
Yes, we do. Sometimes several.
All right, whoops. All right, Kathy, just tell me when to go forward and I will.
That's great. Um, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, uh, we're delighted, the CERT team's delighted to have a chance to talk to you about a very interesting eighteen months. Next slide.
Oops, sorry. There we are.
Um, all of our uh local team procedures were adjusted for COVID. Um, it had considerable impact when the city shut down in March of twenty twenty. We didn't hold a team meeting for sixty days as we were reworking our procedures. We weren't real sure exactly how we were going to move forward, but we were uh very anxious to keep the team moving. Next slide. Uh, right now, uh, our recap, our stats, we have a hundred and nine active members, that is uh qualified basic uh trained members with four or more activities in the last twelve months. We have a hundred and sixty-five people on our roster. Um, the difference is that they were not uh, they're not considered active unless they do at least four activities a month, or four activities a year. We now have eighty-seven ham radio license operator. Uh, Mr. Mayor will remember when we had eight, so we've really grown the number of emergency ham radio operators. We've established through the CIOs, Emergency Neighborhood Communication Hubs, the CIOs have used their uh grant money uh to purchase uh antennas and powerful radios and equipment that we can set up uh so the community has a place to get help. And there, uh, those locations are set up in the schools or in the parks depending on um the, which CIO we're in. We did offer uh online basic training for spring twenty twenty. We finished that up uh in June of twenty twenty. We had a fall class and a spring class uh this year. The re, the way we did it is we went away from in-person training to online training uh through a FEMA course at the University of Utah. This was an online course that was offered free of charge and in conjunction with FEMA. Then we just completed the hands-on training using COVID uh protocol in August and uh just last Saturday. So we finished up uh that class. Next slide. How did we keep training and remain an active team? Well, Zoom, uh, which I didn't even know what it was in March of twenty twenty, became the vehicle for monthly meetings and also for our training. Next, next, we adopted masks. Uh, we have every political uh point of view the city has, but we as a team adopted masks as a uh requirement for any in-person contact along with gloves, safety glasses, and other protection. Next slide. And we encouraged vaccinations, but again, not all of our team members are vaccinated. Next slide. Why did we keep active? We could have shut down. Well, we're of an age where we know that weather and other emergencies can still happen, and if they do happen, we may need to step forward and help protect our neighbors and ourselves. Our earthquake risk remains. It hasn't gone away. We just haven't been talking about it much. And if, if there's a significant earthquake, either in the Cascadia Subduction Zone or in the West Hills, which has also been studied by Washington County Emergency Management, Twolton will be on its own for weeks. And being on our own means without gas, water, power, natural gas, or transportation systems. We also have the special risk from major flooding from Hag Lake Dam. Although the county and the Corps of Engineers have studied how to uh repair or replace that dam, it still has not been done. And flooding from the dam is about three days away, so once it breaks, we're going to have some water coming at us. Next slide. The other program we have, which we're very excited about, is Twolton Neighborhood Ready, where we do training for a neighborhood group. Uh, we've expanded that training to Zoom training. Uh, the Poll Center also allowed us to offer some classes through their uh enrollment program, and, and those were very successful. We also held our classes outdoors. Uh, in cul-de-sacs, uh, the photo shows one of those where people had sort of social distance, but they are outdoor. We did five of those classes. Our rough count of the number of residents and employees, and we do have a business program, and we have done training for businesses, is about seven hundred and fifty people since two thousand nineteen. Next slide. The City of Twolton mobilized us uh in February of this year. The storm cleanup, which was very needed and very popular throughout all the neighborhoods, we responded within twenty-four hours of getting the call of having sixty volunteers take uh four shifts over five days. Uh, our effort uh eliminated uh the need for the city to provide employees to do our tasks, and it was it was uh very rewarding because it was a much-needed project, and we are so glad the city did it. Next slide. Our other mobilization was by Washington County. We provided in March and April at multiple vaccine clinics, uh twenty uh volunteers who took shifts to help the medical staff move the population through uh, through the, their center, and that was at St. Anthony's Church in Tigard. Next slide. What are our challenges for this next year? Well, the pandemic is still with us. It makes any kind of person-to-person contact more challenging. Uh, we still have a lot of neighbors who are afraid. They're afraid of their unvaccinated neighbors. Uh, and then there are unvaccinated people who aren't afraid, and it's just a kind of an awful mix. So it is, what we've been trying to do is keep our volunteers safe by using good protocol and just muscle our way through this, this issue, trying to help every neighbor we can. Next slide. But overall, I'd say our CERT program outlook is bright in spite of the bumps that COVID has given us. And I credit Lindsay uh Marshall and Clay Reynolds. They've been wonderful to work with. Uh, Clay adjusted our role so that if there was a medical or a significant emergency, we cut out our medical uh operations uh so that we wouldn't be transporting anyone. Uh, we sat down and said, okay, how do we keep your volunteers safe and still help the neighborhoods? And we were able to come up with a plan that was workable, and more importantly, since we're all volunteers, it was very, it was acceptable to the majority of our volunteers. And then speaking of the businesses and residents in Twolton, they have been so open to us. I mean, we're running around with our plastic helmets, but I think they understand exactly what we're trying to do, and they are very supportive. On the news front, we have added uh two new CERT uh members who are Spanish speakers, and they have agreed to go through the FEMA training to become trainers for the Twolton team. We've had Spanish-speaking volunteers before, but these are the first two that are willing to do the additional forty hours of training that they would need to become a trainer. We also used a program from Washington County that provided uh four three-hour sessions in Spanish to the uh community here in Twolton in two thousand nineteen. But since COVID has hit, Washington County Public Health hasn't had time to help us, and we understand completely. So that's our presentation. Uh, we're optimistic. Lindsay, you want to take her down? I'll be glad to answer any questions uh you have. I probably have enough information at my fingertips to talk for seven and a half hours, so feel free to ask any questions you want. If I don't have the answer, I'll get back to you.
Questions for Kathy? Council Pratt?
Well, first, I want to thank you, Kathy, and all the CERT members, and Lindsay and Clay, and everybody um for having this program. It's just a wonderful thing. Um, you know, especially in particular that storm response and the cleanup, because that um man is pretty well-known throughout her region, and it was kind of a source of pride to be able to say, yeah, that's our city. But um, and one thing I think we've all learned this last eighteen months, um, is that emergencies will happen, and we don't necessarily know what they might be. So I'm wondering if um, as part of your CERT training you go through, I know we we all expect or know that we could have a devastating earthquake sometime, the Cascadia, but do you go through different scenarios with different types of disasters to prepare people?
Yeah, we do. Uh, the Twolton Ready focuses on fire and weather, uh, storms, ice storms, and uh, because those are the most common. I mean, we prepare for a devastating shutdown of the city, but that makes us better prepared for an ice storm where uh part of the city loses power. But even with the preparation, we have an extensive document that our members prepared things they didn't realize when they lost power from the ice storm. I mean, these are people who have spent years preparing, and even they found that there were some things they weren't ready to tackle. So it's uh, the, really, the readiness is for uh fire, weather, because those are the most likely. And then if we're prepared for that devastating event, let's just hope it doesn't happen.
Other questions for Kathy? Council Brooks?
Um, I wanted to say thank you as well and to all the CERT volunteers um and to everybody that works with the city to help with this, and I do agree with Councilor Pratt around just understanding that resiliency is a big issue for communities now, and um in all the different ways that we're looking at that, and I feel that this year has been the less, you know, it's just been the um, the pilot program for global warming and what's going to happen. So I wanted to particularly give a shout out to you for being safe during COVID and for the team also responding and going and helping in clinics, and not everyone's comfortable doing that kind of work. I know what healthcare and clinical work is, and so for volunteers to go into situations um that are healthcare settings is uh takes a certain kind of courage and awareness, so I want to do a special thank you to that, and the first responders right now in the pandemic, I think are really feeling it, and so any support that we can give in the community and CERT stepping up in that way is something that I feel really proud about. I also um went through the train, the, one of the trainings for the neighborhood readiness and the amount of things that I had learned. I don't have everything under my bed that I should, but I do I do have water in my garage, and so um it's progress, and I want to keep learning, and I know that there's so much for all of us to keep learning, and um so thanks for having seven hours of information and being an encyclopedia, and um, and I hope we don't need it. I, when you bring up this dam at Hag Lake, too, I just wonder, how do we push on that? Um, and maybe the mayor's thought about our people in previous administrations, but that's something that I really appreciate you bringing up because that sounds concerning, and um a place that we could be investing that I would feel more comfortable than some of the other choices the county's been making. Let's put it that way. Thanks.
Well, the Hag Lake, um, the dam has been subject of I mean, years and years and years of wrangling to get money. I know both Senators Merkley and Wyden constantly ask for money to pay for the, you know, it's millions and millions of dollars to replace that dam. And uh, it's way beyond the ability of the county to do. So both our senators have, and all our representatives in Congress have always been asking for money, but it never comes through to fix the dam. You know, it's
Well, maybe something on the infrastructure projects, because that's what that's supposed to be targeted towards, and I know that um Senator Wyden's very focused on that right now in the Budget Committee, so thanks. That's good info.
Yep. Other questions for? Other questions for Kathy? Oh, I got, oh good, Council President Grimes.
Thank you. It's not so much a question, it's just a giant compliment. This is just an excellent program and you have just shown fantastic leadership in getting this up and running and keeping it going. I mean, the number of active certified trained volunteers is amazing. And the fact that we're up to 87 ham operators, I think that that's just fantastic. And I know I see in my area practices or drills, I know we've had one out at the elementary school here in the middle of our community. So I know people are continually practicing and, you know, learning and getting ready for the community. And I just, I think it's just a marvelous thing that you've done. And I commend you and all the volunteers for all the hard work. And I know Kathy, you have really been a very strong leader to this. And I appreciate that. And we are already in your debt and God forbid something happens.
Well, thank you. Madam President, there's, there's something that is so profound about the volunteers who step forward. Again, we have every political belief possible, but they are the kindest people in the world and they are able to work together because they really want to help neighbors, every one of them. And it isn't just one person. I just happen to be the one with the PowerPoint tonight. We have a board of nine people that are remarkable. If you have time, you can go on our website and get, it's at tuolatoncert.org. And it's a, it links to our member website, which you can't have access to, but it gives a brief overview of our program. And again, we couldn't do any of this without these volunteers. I mean, it would just need me in a PowerPoint presentation. So I, I'm so proud of them. And every time I meet new ones, I'm just overwhelmed by their generous spirit.
As Council President Grimes just said, Kathy, I thank you very much for running this over all the years. Remember when you started this up and had the gentleman over from Tigard help us get this launched?
Right.
You, you just ran with this over the years and you've attracted people to be part of this program. I know the ham operator test is not the easiest to pass. And that, so lots of people were challenged by it, but to get up to 87 is amazing that, that's terrific because it's not just, you know, an easy thing. You've got to be certified as a ham operator.
Well, they're, they're a network throughout the city, which means if cell towers are down, we can still get information out.
And it's going to be super important. And we get it across the United States.
Yes, oh yeah.
Network of ham operators as a whole.
Oh, that, they can go, some of these guys are talking to people all over the world every night.
Exactly. So I just want to bring up the, the ice storm. And you mentioned it, you know, the lack of electricity that you learned a lot. And it's one of the things I learned is, okay, we didn't have electricity just for a few days. You realize it fairly quickly. And back in the old, I remember when we started CERT, or when you started CERT, you know, we were told just have enough food and water for a few days. And now it's have it for weeks. I've taken a heart, because I live so close by to Kathy, is I've got a ton of freaking water in my garage and Costco now sells like survival meal kits.
Yeah.
That you can buy, they'll last you a couple, three weeks. Got a bunch of those in the garage. So, you know, I've appreciated you helping me out with this and the city. And look forward to more, you know, that when we need you, you'll be there and we can rely on our CERT team members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Grimes?
Thank you. I also want to mention in the chat, Rocky, I thought had a really interesting idea about using some of the CIO money, the allotted budget per community organization to maybe invest in some generators so that when we do have emergency situations, whether it's people that are on lifesaving equipment or oxygen or just individual communities that could use a generator for, you know, warmth, electricity, communication, charging cell phones, whatever it might be. That's kind of a neat idea. I don't know who could follow up with that.
Well, we, I saw his question and it, we are, we do have members who have generators. But we talked about the communication hubs having generators. What we tried is we have solar panels and a trickle charge down to a battery that has a mechanism so you can plug in things to charge in, charge up other than a transformer that allows you to charge up your phone and that kind of thing. What we discovered in the ice storm is panels are not worth very much. We need many more panels. So now we're exploring generators. The problem with generators is they need fuel. So if we're stuck for two or three weeks, we may not have enough fuel. So I think it is a good thing for us to be talking about, but we need to solve the fuel problem. Generators run on propane. See now you'd be careful now, we're going to go in the weeds. Propane, propane stores well, but the efficiency of propane is less than diesel. So these guys who are exploring it, and I think it is a question worth exploring. And you may see on the grant requests, these buy fuel generators, which can either be diesel or propane. Because we're, we're not sure what fuel is going to be available. The second thing we're thinking about, and I think you've probably know this, Washington County is doing an analysis on buildings that could be used to house people who may have lost their housing. And Lindsey could probably talk to that. They've hired a consultant to do it. They're doing an analysis of the area. We already have an opinion of where, where they might be. But that's another question. If we have a lot of people who've lost their housing, where can they be? The other problem we have is I-5. We may have a lot of people there who can't stay in their cars, who don't belong to us. Where do we put them? So there's a lot of long-term planning questions that Lindsey and Washington County are looking at. In addition to, do we have enough fuel to run all the generators?
True.
So it's, it's good to be with people who like to think these problems through.
Yeah. And I was in a presentation, and I know you know this Kathy, that in the event, the Cascadia earthquake, that most of our supplies can be dropped via Redmond.
Right.
And we have to transport it from Redmond to here because of diversification of a lot of the area around us, whereas Redmond is not subject to that. So they, a lot of people working years on these plans and revising and updating. And it's, what's nice about it is there's a regional planning network who are working on this, you know, between Oregon and Washington, make sure we have really good plans.
Yeah, and, and every time they do something, it's a good thing. But what we assume is that nobody's coming for a while. And we're concerned about people who are older, who are in their homes. That's why Neighborhood Ready is so important. If you get to know, we found in doing one of our neighborhood meetings that people thought that a lady that came and went in the morning and the evening lived there, but she wasn't. She was a caregiver for a woman who was bedridden. This was a neighbor. They did not know they had a bedridden neighbor. But with Tuolaton Neighborhood Ready, you get to meet your neighbors. And this would be a very vulnerable person in a crisis. So we're, we just assume it's going to be bad. Like me trying to get my PowerPoint to show up. I told Lindsey, I'm not sure it'll call up, so we had a backup.
All right. And then, you know, to wrap this up, you and I have had discussions about, you know, kids coming home from school.
Yeah.
The parents, their parents are in downtown Portland, working or somewhere else they can't get back. You know, we've got to keep an eye on the kids in the neighborhood also, in addition to the elderly.
Yeah, and stranger danger is taught. So if they don't know their neighbors, how is the neighbor going to invite them over?
Right, exactly. Well, thank you very much Kathy for that dose of reality and how important this is in our area.
Thank you.
All right. So looking at the agenda and that, that we're up to. Items removed from consent agenda, there were none. Any Council Communications? Council Pratt?
Just want to mention, because I think it's kind of exciting that the Tuolaton Sustainability Network on Wednesday from some 8:30 is going to have Suzie Peterson talking about backyard habitat certification in Tuolaton. So if anybody's interested, you could go to tusn.org and it's batch slash blog, or you can just scroll down to where it says events and it directs you to click on the blog link. And it'll tell you how to get on that Zoom meeting. I just, I think it's a great program, so wanted to let people know.
Anyone else? I got two items I spaced on when I was racing through my events. I forgot about, this afternoon, I attended the Aging Task Force meeting. Kudos to Steve Cooper or Copper and Mike McCarthy. They were peppered with questions related to transportation in the city, you know, what, what's going on with it and the Tuolaton Movement Forward Program, questions about In-N-Out Burger, all kinds of questions. And they did a great job answering the questions for the Aging Task Force. And the other thing is just a heads up for city staff, transportation-related staff. ODOT announced that the Connect Oregon applications, the window's going to open on the 15th and stay open through the 29th of October. And they have $46 million to fund projects this year. So if there's anything we want to get done in the city, the Connect Oregon application process starts Wednesday. We'll go through the end of October. And it takes, I guess the evaluation is quite a while before we might see any money if we apply for something. But I want to let staff know that, Ryan Winshimer brought that up today. Council Rance?
Yeah, I just, in this Council of Communication section, I just want to say that this month, on the, starting the September 15th through October 15th, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And so since the, I think the second largest population within Tuolaton is our, are the Spanish speakers, I just thought I'd bring that up and make sure that we are communicating that to our community and is to remember all the Spanish-speaking countries from Latin America. Some of these countries will celebrate their Independence Day starting, I want to say the 15th through the end of, through middle of October. So Central American countries, Mexico, and some South American countries. So I thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so we have a motion to adjourn for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone, good evening. Have a nice evening, have a nice night.